Other stories with A SKIN.
During sex, he likes to finish by saying abracadabra. Then he disappears in a cloud of smoke. He's magician, magician Justin Rivera. He knows the country like the back of Google Maps. He's the host of Unboxing America, Nick Johnson. She's currently starting a business as an online maid, but she doesn't do windows, only Mac. She's my co-host Melissa Greenberg. Mono E monolith. Recently, in a remote part of Utah, two helicopter pilots noticed a mysterious object on the ground while conducting a head count of sheep. The object turned out to be a monolith. Since the discovery, however, the monolith has since disappeared. While a second monolith has appeared in Romania. Romania of all places. Okay, that's kind of weird. So um, I think the real mystery here, uh, Justin is uh, there's a job for counting sheep. Screw the monolith, what's up with the sheep?
Yeah, that is a, that is a very weird job. I just thought people did that when they go to sleep or whatever. I didn't know you can be a professional sheep counter. But uh, yeah, it's uh, it is weird though, like, well, nobody knows how it got there. But I read that they, the, uh, there was a photographer that actually witnessed a group of like four guys that disassembled and took it apart in like a wheelbarrow. And uh, I don't think it's the same person that assembled it because that's kind of like if you, you know, drop your old couch off on the freeway and then came back and picked it up later, like that doesn't happen.
Is that what happened with this monolith? It was, it was some couch that the aliens dropped off?
Yeah, it's so weird, man. I don't know, man. It just seems like a very white hipster thing to do. It's just, hey, look at this ironic piece of metal around red stone. Let's see. You know what I mean? It's kind of like those crop circles.
Yeah, it's funny you brought up those, uh, those guy hipsters. I was calling them hippies when I read that they, it was those guys. Cause they were all complaining. They're all like, oh yeah, the environment, man. And it's just like, yeah, okay, cool. But like, people wanted to see that. Yeah, it's just weird. Nick, uh, would you just say this piece of artwork is uh, because here, you could see on this shot right here, the monolith is just hovering next to you. Yeah. Would you just say though, that Banksy's going through a phase? I mean, is that really what's happening here?
Uh, that would be really cool. You know, he usually sticks to painting on the sides of walls. I, I kind of think somebody probably put that there a long time ago. And then it's probably was waiting forever for somebody to find it. And then eventually somebody spotted it. Like who knows how long that thing was there, right? Like supposedly some accidental, some guys just saw it. So somebody could have put that there 10 years ago and they'd sit there waiting for someone to find it. And then they sat up, you know, the other day and we're like, oh shit, somebody found it like, and somebody put another one in another country. So like apparently, I don't know if somebody is clearly in on it together or copycat, yeah, like whatever. But um, my, that was my thought was how long had that been sitting there waiting for somebody to find it?
Uh, rumor was it was 2015, 2016, but I don't even know how they would know that if they didn't know it was even there to begin with.
They found a shoe, the type of shoe footprint.
Do they carve and date the scrap metal rivets or something? Cause I, I read that there was rivets that were left behind because when they disassembled it, they carted it off in a wheelbarrow.
No, this is symbol monolith.
Hipsters probably recycled that metal. Yeah, you know, that's why they came back for it.
Yeah, they turned it, they turned it into a bike rack. By the way, uh, Nick, I love what you did with your hair. I don't know if that's just uh, COVID.
I wasn't gonna say anything.
No.
Melissa's hair here.
Just like the monolith.
My barber, uh, she was, she's been off.
You look like a handsome carrot top.
And maybe, no, uh, no, yeah. My, uh, the lady that cuts my hair was doing backyard uh, haircuts behind the business. And then she got caught. So she's not only in jail, but now, you know.
She was in jail for cutting hair? Geez Louise.
Well, for cutting hair, when you're not supposed to open, like she was doing like, you know, and so then when they arrested her, she had the scissors in her hand and they tased her and it made it worse because she had metal in her hand.
Did she do a press conference saying, here was a setup? With setup? Melissa, Utah, uh, they're only known for Mormons and sex shops. So do you think that there was something else going on here with the monolith?
I love how like the go-to was aliens. Like that was what everybody's like, oh yeah, it had to be aliens. That's like the first thing everybody's like, ooh, monolith. Must be aliens or monkeys, you know?
They were alien monkeys.
They were just, oh yeah, you know? And then the four guys who took it, the photographer that captured, I don't know what he was doing there, but the guy that took the picture of the four guys taking it. He was like, they were doing it with purpose. It's like, yeah, to take it.
Yeah.
They stole it. We don't know it was the same guy, just like, like Justin was saying.
Yeah. When I read, when I read the, when I read the guy that was talking about, the photographer, he, he was showing up. So if I read it right, he was showing up to the thing and then saw the guys doing it. And like, somebody said, uh, I guess one of the four guys had said like, I hope you guys got your pictures, you know, blah, blah, blah. Cause it's, we're taking it away. But I'm thinking like the, the guy that was walking up to it as they were taking away, it must've been like when you were all excited, thinking you're making it like to a department store on time. And then you realize they closed early and you're just all.
But the aliens are dressed like humans. You know, they're taking it back to the ship.
They didn't want like park ranger or anything like that? Or how do, we don't know.
Their ship was a, their ship was a, was a 2019 Toyota Tacoma. Yeah. And now for some express news around the world. Espresso news with Melissa Greenberg.
All right, our first story today. Austrian village named fucking to change name after unwanted tourist attention. The residents of tiny Austrian village named fucking have voted to change its name after enduring unwanted attention from English speaking tourists. Come next year, the village of a hundred residents near the German border will be named fucking. I can confirm that the village, I should do this with an accent. I can confirm that the village is being renamed. Andrea Holzner, the mayor of Tamsdorf, the municipality where the village and his village is located, told Regional Daily Oberst Recht nachricht. It's the newspaper. I really don't want to say anything more. We've had enough media frenzy about this in the past. English speaking tourists have increasingly flocked to fucking for a photo op next to the entrance sign bearing the village's name. And I don't know if you can actually, I'll do this real.
No fucking, there's no fucking here.
Is that in Austria? Where is that?
Yeah, Austria.
Austria, that's what it.
There's no fucking.
Striking lewd poses in front of the, the marker for social media.
That's funny.
Lewd poses, what is adding, what does that include? Is it just poking your nose? Just poking your nose?
That is the best publicity for this town. I mean, why would you change it? It's like that, uh, it's like on a Schitt's Creek where the, the sign and the dude, you remember, you just remember that episode with the, I don't know if you guys watched Schitt's Creek? There was a sign where the guys.
This reminds me. This, this reminds me of a friend of mine who got a tattoo. He's Russian, back in the day, he got a tattoo in English on his arm. And it said, white trash. And I was like, why did you write that on your arm? He says, oh yeah, no, it was like, this is way back in the day. Like Mickey Rourke was really badass. He goes, oh yeah, it's like Mickey Rourke, man, like cool, badass thing to do. I'm like, no, it's actually like redneck trash and having sex with your sister in a trailer. So he covered it up with a thing, but like, these are like, oh, this is a problem.
Brown trash.
They're calling our city fucking and it's a problem. So they're going to change it to fucking. Literally sounds the same. Wouldn't you think you made a mistake in English the first time? That you would check with someone, hey, he's fucking better than fucking? Because it, you know, it's different.
The best part, there's some other guy who doesn't realize that it sounds very similar. He's got like a bad accent himself, you know? So he's like, oh no, I thought it was fooging. Yes, fooging.
How does the original pronunciation even sound like?
Yeah, the Austrian, yeah, the Austrian.
I speak a little German, so I would imagine the F U C K I N G is cooking or something like that.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean the same. It doesn't mean the same thing in English, right? I mean, what is?
I don't know.
Cause I mean, obviously.
Somebody. I just know that the village has been named that. They said that there was, they found a map from 1825 that bore the village name of fucking. But some experts believe the name dates back to the 11th century. Cause like, right?
We've been fucking for 11th century, since 11th century. I, I love how if you think about it, everything in that town has to be called fucking, like the fucking library, the fucking, I'm going to be the fucking mayor of fucking.
This is kind of like, um, that controversy with the, uh, the N word, how it's also a word in the, uh, in Mandarin, where it means like, uh, look or um, or uh, it's like a passing word. It's like one of those filler words. So like.
I didn't even know that.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't want to say that. I don't want to say it because I don't know who's going to watch this on YouTube and like cut a clip and then take it out of context.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just going to say that basically the N word, how the Chinese pronounce it is.
Same neighbor.
Like uh, or um, or like look. So, but there was a whole like, uh, controversy with it, with the, well, because of like culture. I mean, they're same, pretty much the same word, but they mean that they're different things. Pronounced slightly different.
I love too, that this is by the way, a village, like we have the village fucking idiot here.
The whole fucking village.
The whole fucking village. I'm going to the fucking airport. Nick, you're awful quiet about this. Do you have, do you have no experience with?
His family's from there.
Do you have no experience with fucking whatsoever?
Are we recording?
Yes. I like your fucking hair, Nick. He's so quiet.
Oh, okay. We're gonna move on if we're, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, world news. So this one comes from London. Veterinary nurse and law student shows her tampon string on the side of a London bus.
London calling.
Yeah. In a beauty show, periods are natural. A woman will appear on the side of a bus showing her tampon string for a first time. And I have a picture of the ad because.
That sounds, that sounds like a bloody good time, if you know what I mean, baby.
Like the tampon strings hanging out? Is that what we're about?
Out of the bus door?
Like on the side of the bus, when you see, I guess if you're in England, it's an advert.
Oh dang.
There's the.
Oh.
What are they trying to say? Like it's okay to not be, um, appropriate?
Yeah, it's, um, they fit well.
Like we all make mistakes? Is it a tampon commercial?
Yeah, it's an ad for, for this, I guess, movement. And in bringing this ad to light, we've faced many roadblocks. It's no coincidence that the media industry is dominated by men who aren't comfortable talking about or seeing periods. I'm seriously, I can't even imagine a man even notices.
Well, who's comfortable about periods in general? Who wants to talk about? Who wants to see, I mean, I don't know, man. I mean, like, maybe if we were like a family life class in the sixth grade. But I mean, other than that, I mean, who else?
Do women actually make that mistake? Like with the string outside the underwear like that? Or are they, is that like a complete, like overly done?
Like I, I would imagine if you have a jockstrap or something, like has any of your balls fallen out? Like it, it's easy enough that that could happen. If you put your underwear on after you, you know, you do that, you put your underwear on.
I didn't know the string was that long. That's why I'm asking, I thought they were short.
You don't want to be fishing for that.
First time I saw that hanging out in real life, I thought I could pull it and streamers and confetti would pop out.
That would be awesome.
Didn't.
You just gave me a great idea.
You know, what's, what's so sad is I said that joke right when she said this story. None of you heard it, damn.
Which one?
Uh, I said, it's a party popper. I know.
You know, if they could do this, they wanted to draw more attention to that. It was like, you know, like on the bus, they've got the thing that you pull down to tell them to stop. They should have tampon strings that everybody pulls out like. And then blood comes down to it.
Or like they all fall from the sky like oxygen masks, like an airplane?
Like you have to pull the tampon string down to like.
There you go.
You know what? That reminds me guys, if I could share this really quick. Yes, since I've been in quarantine, I've been working on trying like new tricks. Well, I've been trying to update classic tricks. Like you ever see, uh, Houdini or a magician swallow needles and swallow thread in their mouth and then pull it out? It all comes out tied together. So I had this idea to take a bunch of tampons, put in my mouth and then take floss, put in my mouth. And then I, I pull it and all the, all the tampons are tied to the, to the floss.
Keep them wrapped. The things that expand five times their size and choking.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, well, I drink water while I'm doing it too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Definitely do that.
No, uh, you know, for, for the end of that bit, it needs to be a pad at the end. Just, just change it up.
Something wrong with you guys.
It's boys talking about periods. It's gonna be wrong.
You know what? I didn't know who exactly would be on the show today, but I just knew this would go over and, and, um, I don't know, I don't, the ad they had said was racy, several iterations of the, I can't, I can only imagine what they rejected.
Hey, have you seen that commercial where the girl's singing vagina? Cause she has the yeast infection and she uses that cream. Have you seen that one? Where she's doing yoga? She's doing yoga and every time she spreads her legs, her, her vagina starts singing. And she's all. I swear on my life, there's some, it's a horrible, we'll have to look it up. Maybe I'll even edit it into the show.
I think I've seen it.
Yeah, there's two.
Commercial, right?
There's a, you know, it's here in the United States. It was the, um, yeah. And it was these two girls doing yoga and all of a sudden like this girl's vagina starts singing. And then one of the girls is all, what's that? And she goes, oh, ever since I started using whatever it is for my yeast infection, blah, blah, blah. And then she just spreads her legs at the end of the commercial and it's just all like. What the hell is this dude?
Was that a vaginal commercial?
Talent is what that is.
Is it massing gel? Have you seen it? I don't know what it, what, what the product is. I was shocked by the singing vagina.
I am this close to leaving this to go Google it.
The vagina's like, we have been here for thousands of years.
So do they make tampon strings for people with short arms that have really long strings like?
They keep it like right here tucked out of their collar.
Like T-Rex, like, you know, people have a real short arm. You know, your friend that never reaches back for his wallet when it's time to pay the bill.
I'm surprised they don't have an app for it yet.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
An app.
Yeah, so, um, we're good, right?
Yeah. Period. And uh, yeah, moving.
Our next story comes from Kazakhstan, of course. Kazakhstani bodybuilder marries sex doll after whirlwind romance.
Wait, what?
That's a thing in Japan, I think, like.
The guy married a doll in Kazakhstan?
Proving that love is blind and sometimes kooky, a bodybuilder from Kazakhstan has tied the knot with his dearly beloved, a sex doll he dated for eight months before proposing a year ago. Clad in black tracks and bow tie, uh, Yuri Talachko is seen planting a gentle kiss on Margo, who appears a bit stiff in a revealing white gown as she clutches a bouquet of flowers and stares.
You, you, you can't date a sex doll. It's essentially rape. There, the, the doll can't consent to anything. Like you can't consent to a relationship. You can't, you can't consent to getting married. I mean, how is that dog going to sign the marriage license? I mean, how does that work? I don't know, that's bizarre to me.
Apparently, uh, well, I don't know if it's legal, but, um, it's not, it, I think it's not illegal.
Not illegal, but it's not legal.
Yeah.
It just doesn't count.
Right, like.
Very nice. I want you to meet my wife, very nice, sexy.
Unconventional couple got engaged in December 2019. Wait, when's eight months later? This shit just. When the bald, blue eyed hunk, I didn't write this, who described himself as a sexy maniac pops, popped a question. And images shared on social media illustrate the couple's romantic lifestyle.
Pop the why? Pop the question.
Like this story would be more believable if the guy was a ventriloquist and I could like, it would just make more sense.
Look how adorable that is though. I agree with that. Are they going to give birth to like a Barbie doll or a Cabbage Patch Kid or something? That'd be great.
Well, I didn't say if they were planning kids.
Were people at the wedding or were they like alone? Oh, it was attended by a lot of people?
Yeah, it was attended by friends.
Did he hold her, like who held her up while she? Did she, did she nod?
But it said, um, the, the wedding was delayed. The wedding had gotten delayed because of the pandemic, like.
She had a leak, so they had to stop.
Why don't you want to know how they met?
Oh, yeah.
They met on the, on his doorstep.
They met at a, at a, let me see. Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me see if I can figure this out.
Pretty good at this stuff. If I have a weird story, Lisa's life is weirder.
Probably a convention, I'm assuming, one of those like adult conventions.
That's a good, that's a good guess. I'm going to guess he saw her on TV, like a commercial or something, and decided to call in and ask about it. He inquired about her somewhere. Maybe he saw her on something, the internet, TV.
Like Adam and Eve dot com.
Maybe, maybe that, or, um.
Good guesses.
Uh, we're trying to guess how they met?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm gonna say garage sale.
She dated his brother.
Bought her freedom from the original owner.
Slightly used.
Terrible guys.
She smells like Burt Robert, dude. Okay, good.
Kalashko said he met Margo at a nightclub where he rescued, where he rescued her. I can't get through this, where he rescued her from some unwanted attention.
Hey, see, I wasn't far off with the garage sale thing.
Justin got it.
He rescued her.
They had planned to take the plunge in March before the pandemic hit and they did get married in front of guests.
Wait, didn't, wait, Nick, didn't you say they met at a club?
No.
No, Amazon is what I.
I thought I heard somebody say club. Yeah.
Adult convention or a.
He's a little weird, this guy.
Well, you don't say.
Yeah, he, he had said that the wedding was delayed. It was delayed because of coronavirus. And then it was delayed again after he was attacked during a transgender rally in the Kazakh city of Almaty on October 31st, where he suffered a concussion and a broken nose after dressing as a woman for the event. We're not even going to touch that. But he identifies as pansexual. Our story turns me on much more than sex itself, he says. And he enjoys, uh, barge and discipline, domination and submission, sadism and masochism.
That's just regular, this is regular sex for him.
He's a well-rounded guy. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, like, there's no consent regardless. So it's beyond BDSM.
He loves being tortured. I can endure a lot of pain. I love to dominate too. Margo is capable of what other people are not capable of.
Margo's the doll?
Yeah. So like what, being.
Who named her?
Blown up by an air mattress pump or something?
Who named her Margo? Was that her name when he met her?
I don't know, maybe she, she checked her ID or something.
Right at the nightclub?
I didn't even know that, I didn't even know that, uh, all these adult sex dolls could actually contract COVID. Like how would, how does it, how do you?
I don't think she had it, I think they.
Probably carry it. Like you gotta wash your hands, wash your sex toys, you know? I don't.
She's a carrier, huh?
Yeah. The only requirement, what?
No, 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 good.
Go ahead, say something gross.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, how come they don't make, how come they don't make voodoo dolls? Like for sex dolls, or sex dolls into voodoo dolls? Like why are they always some ragged little like disgusting? Like doll that people stick pins in? Why not make, why not like get some voodoo doctor to do some voodoo to a sex doll? So this way, every time you have sex with it, some girl randomly feels it and she's just like.
Well, you know, they, they have those, you can control over wifi.
Oh, the panties, yeah, yeah, I've seen those.
That's basically what the voodoo doll.
I got your information for you. The only requirements for a wedding to take place in Kazakhstan are that both consenting partners have to be male and female over 18 years old with no mention of whether dolls are included.
So the doll has to be 18 years old?
Right?
Like.
Like from the time it was manufactured, from the time the materials were gathered. Like one of the doll years is a doll in people years.
How great would that be if he got totally busted for her being underage? Cause she's only like two years old or something like that.
This guy gives relationship advice. He said couples need to talk less and connect more. With time and experience, Margo and I realized it takes more than words to have a conversation.
More than words.
I'm telling you.
Talk with your schnozzle in her mouth. I mean.
The dude's been so quick.
Hey, hey, do you think when they, do you think when they first met, he used a condom?
She is a condom.
Yeah, her whole body is made of the same material.
That's the joke. Okay, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, if you explain it, it's funnier. That's the news.
Oh, okay. That's a, that's, that's the news from around the world.
But that's good, that, that'll do for today.
In Buffalo, New York, a school board meeting was taking place when suddenly a board member became belligerent. As you can see here, Paulette Woods lost her shit during a Zoom conference with the rest of the school board meeting. I also want to point out, before I start showing you guys, or going to you guys for questions here, I want to point something out here. This woman obviously is having some type, she, some type of vengeance towards a woman who was talking at the time.[1754.14] towards a woman who was talking at the time. If you've watched the video, I didn't put it up. But I did get video footage from the actual school where this lady works and apparently she's not the only one who does this. So let's take a look. Hey, slow down. This is the school zone.
Fuck you, Janet.
All right. That, uh, bad teacher, bad teacher. Yeah. So I didn't really have questions uh, lined up like for this, just because I thought this was kind of all obvious. Uh, Melissa, I'm gonna go to you first since you deal with online classes non-stop. Exactly. There you go. Hey, you know, all of you guys should just be flipping me off for this segment. You and, and uh, oh, he's waving. Okay.
No, I'm trying to like make my hand match the other lady's hands.
Everyone's doing a finger thing. Okay.
This is finger magic.
Yeah, but mine's the only one that's in her hand, but.
So uh, yeah, Meli- damn, Melissa, you done that whole glass. You're a champ. All right, so. Did you watch that video? The video was great. I actually did it. I should have, I should have played the video. I didn't even have it uh, queued up or anything. But yeah, the video is great, so.
Obviously not for you two kids, I'm assuming, this show.
Well, we talked about a, a town named Fucking, so I guess it's okay that we just uh, go right into. So yeah, uh, hooking. Um, so you've done enough of these uh, Zoom, Zoom classes, I guess, to totally relate with this woman. I don't think she was being unreasonable. I mean, to be honest, what do you think?
I'm surprised it didn't happen sooner.
Right?
Like right when it started. She, did you see her? She's just like, all right, all right, yeah, I keep talking. And she finished the wine in the, in the video. She's like. And I think her hair was falling off, no?
She's like, leave me alone. Yeah.
But did you see like right before she did it, she was like. You know, like she just got the last out of. Who hasn't felt like that? We've been in the house for eight months. Maybe she hates that woman. Like I wouldn't do it that way. I'm way like sicker. You know, I'd stay up late at night and do something. I wouldn't do it like where everyone could see it. But um, but I get it. Oh, I get it.
Nick, uh, Nick, do you think uh, I don't like, did you watch a video for starters? I don't know if you saw the video.
I saw it.
Nick, did you see it? Okay, Justin.
I think that the lady is clearly has some issues and hopefully, you know, she doesn't get fired for that because uh, wait, she's on the board. You can't really fire her, right?
They want her to step down.
Anyway, I mean, I've been on boards. I've been asked to be on boards. It's not fun. Sometimes you want to get off the board, but they won't let you off. So she's probably just like, get rid of me. It's her way of just being like, I'm out, peace. That's what I think.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you because I know obviously you worked uh, as a substitute teacher for a while. And the thing was uh, it was the, the um, I was gonna say though, like, isn't it pretty just mandatory for the educational staff to always just be kind of fucking hammered behind the scenes? And then like, there's always that one person where you're just like, I hate that guy. And the best part is when you watch that video, she didn't, I don't think she knew her camera was on. I think she totally just, or, or she didn't know that she was being recorded. Because the best part is she was quiet. No, but that's what I'm saying. She was like muted and just totally like.
Yeah, she maybe she didn't know she was on.
Yeah, she didn't know she was on. That's why I was wondering like, yeah, cuz.
Well, then she issues some sort of a statement. You know, everyone issues a statement afterwards.
She was.
Yeah, she had a statement, but um.
Bring her on next week and see if we can rattle her and get her all pissed off and just poke her, mess with her and see if we can get her to, you know.
We just ask her to do it. She seemed pretty primed. Like she might just do it.
That's her closing bit.
Yeah, get her on and then, and then get her to freak out.
Yeah.
Kind of like the guy in the bagel store, that comic that like, did you see that comic? And like now he's famous for being the guy that freaks out.
Every, yeah, he says everybody hates him cuz he's short and stuff and yeah.
Jerk, but.
Uh, Justin, do you uh, I know, I know that uh, most of your comedy shows, you do this as a closing bit. Um.
Well, this is the reason why I despise doing Zoom comedy shows cuz of the audience. You just don't know what's gonna happen. Well, like with this lady, you know, they're drinking, watching comedy and you, she basically heckles, heckles you. That's basically getting heckled on a Zoom comedy show. Like, you know the funny, the, the, the worst story I heard about getting heckled on a Zoom comedy show? Happened to my friend. He was saying that this guy didn't like him, so he took his foot and he covered it with the camera. It happened to my friend. He was telling me, dude, like when it, when it happened early in the pandemic, when we started figuring out any Zoom shows, how to like, how they work. And that's how he got heckled on, on a Zoom show.
It wasn't tipping.
Just literally put his foot in front of his camera just to block his face. But yeah, seriously, this is the reason why, you know, I saw this video. This is why I despise doing live Zoom comedy shows with an audience. And you know, but when I first saw this, I didn't see the headline. I just thought this uh, school board meeting was being Zoom bombed by some crazy old lady. Cause remember how Zoom bombings are like the uh, 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 an issue like early on in the pandemic? Like they didn't know how to stop it. This is one of those, those things. But this lady, I think she, she basically kinda went, yeah, basically tried to quit her job. Like she left out, left off with a bang. Kind of like that one viral video where that guy at um, at a Walmart like announced his uh, resignation over the intercom, all the, and he's like, hey guys, fuck this job, I'm out. He walks out or something like that. I have basically the same thing.
I have a cousin who used to work at Castle Park in Riverside and um, he was, he was, I think it was the dragon swing he controlled or something. And so he would make announcements and there was this guy in line that was talking shit to him. It was just like, oh, come on, bro, blah, 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 saying whatever it was, cuz I think you needed tickets to get on the ride. And so he's just like making announcements, ladies, gentlemen, blah, blah, blah. Please stand five feet away from this and da, 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 da. And the guy just kept going on and on like, hey, bro, blah, blah, blah. And then also my cousin just goes, ladies and gentlemen, the ride will be temporarily, temporarily shut down while I kick this dude's fucking ass. That was his last day at work.
I used to work at Fiesta Village. Remember Fiesta Village?
What is that?
Yeah, right there on the two fifteen.
Yeah, we got fired cuz we were letting, that we were uh, sending kids down five at a time with the chute, the pull down magic uh, chute thing. We just must have let it go up to like three and but it would go all the way to like eight with the water. Anyway, we let kids get on and they would fly like boom. And I got fired for that and for taking hot dogs.
Fiesta Village is like a ghetto uh, Scandia crazy, right?
We weren't ghetto, we were ghetto.
Well, I mean, every time I pass by it, well, back in the day, every time I pass by it to do a set at, at Liam's, it would look pretty fucking ghetto.
Yeah, it's, it's Colton. It's all ghetto, dude. That one finally closed down too. Uh, that one finally closed down. What was the other one? The Pharaoh's Lost Kingdom too, that we've, we filmed.
Did they close down or did they renovate? Or I, I kept hearing all these stories.
They renovated it with fire.
They renovate and like an owner buys it and tries to upgrade.
The, the pyramid burned down. That was actually the best one though. They have the biggest slide. Ace, we used to film. Our show better. Remember the slideshow when we would, you would get at the top and you would slide down the slide?
You filmed my first music video there, remember?
I did. You should actually.
What was the song?
It was a song called Flustered.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was lame. He just looked all sad and he was like.
Yeah, Nick has the video.
I gotta see the video.
I don't have it. Do I? I think you. I don't have it, have it. I mean, it's on a tape in a box.
I was gonna say, I know I have it or had it somewhere on VHS. I don't know if I.
Play it all the time, I'm sure.
It was so. Digitize it, put it, you know, put it on the drive, hard drive, whatever.
I uh, I wouldn't even know where to find it anymore. But yeah, it was uh, one of those songs. It was like a little, it was a heartbreak song. And uh, we did pretty much every generic nineties mu- music video scene you can possibly think of. For uh, for some weird reason, I remember, I remember we had, we had me walking down an empty highway. In the center of the road and it was just a shot of me, like the back of me just walking away.
Median on the like.
This sounds like your new closer, man. You should just close and recreate every nineties music video scene as your.
And dude, that's like a fifteen minute closer. For no reason at all, there was a, there was a clip that we threw in and it was of Nick's uh, ex-girlfriend and I don't know who she was with. It was another girl and they were dancing. It was, no, it was two girls. They were dancing on it. We just got a shot of them dancing on the stage and like in slow motion. We played it back cuz it was a sad song. And so like, she's like going around in a circle and we're trying to make it like all like artsy and, and then we even use like different effects and everything. And uh, oh God, dude, it was so bad. And then I know there was some close up shots of me. I still like mimic those like type of shots, but I mean, they were so bad back then. It was like.
We're gonna have to see this video.
You have to.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have to dig the, I do have videos of him doing things that are, I don't have that video very close at hand, but I do have completed things that he did.
Parodies. You have a lot of parody stuff.
The nineties edition of Cover Stories.
That'd be great. Just all just, yeah, like all grungy looking.
It's like early two thousand, I think. Yeah, we didn't really start until like oh, one, oh, two, oh, oh.
Oh, nevermind.
No, but it was, you know, it was what it was. Everybody else was doing uh, rap rock stuff and we were, we were still trying to uh, capture uh, ironically, I made a reference to extremes more than words. It, it was, it was kind of like that. Uh, yeah, so.
Biscuit, was that rap rock?
Yeah.
Kid, Kid Rock?
Yeah. Said everybody was doing at the time. Uh, Nick, what does your hat say? I was trying to get.
IE.
IE, what is that? It looks like a bird's head.
I'm not even kidding you, man. I was on Instagram earlier today and Carrot Top showed up on my feed and you look, you look and dress like the, look like him, except Carrot Top had like these uh, uh, green and red fingernails for the, for the holidays. Like he lost his damn mind. Like, like literally, this is so weird to see.
With a name like Carrot Top, do you expect him to have a sane mind? Yeah. Um, yeah, I was, Nick's gonna change his name to Cabbage Top, so. He's gonna work at Pharaoh's Lost Kingdom instead of the Luxor. Uh, yeah. Because they have a pyramid, for those that don't know what Pharaoh's is. Okay. Um, well, I want, I wanna, uh, well, is someone breaking into your house right now as we speak?
Maybe we have a special guest.
It's a party crasher. Okay, so let me uh, let me get rid of this. I want to thank my guest. I'm gonna do uh. Wait, he just walked away. He's like, he's like period. Okay, um, and he's, okay, cool.
Not burning down.
Okay. All right. So I want to thank my guest again for a very awesome show. We had uh, Nick Johnson, Justin Rivera, Melissa Greenberg, and my name is Ace G. And this has been Cover Stories.